Thank you. I apologize for taking a little long up here. We haven't seen each other for so long. We're just catching up. Thank you all for being here. This is the April Business Meeting of the Yakima School District Board of Directors. We have Interpretation Services this evening. Is Mr. Macias ready to announce? Thank you, Superintendent Green. First on our agenda is a Pledge of Allegiance, and we have a very special guest here tonight, and Mr. Mitchell. Could you introduce our very special guest? There's a microphone right there. I can hear you, but the audience viewing us cannot.
So we are very pleased and excited to have Pedro Ibanez here from Ridgeview Elementary School to lead us in the pledge. Pedro just looks great tonight, and he's a great student. Really happy to have him.
Pedro, please start whenever you're ready.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pedro, that was great. You did such a good job. What grade are you in?
Third.
Third grade? Who's your teacher?
Akara.
I'm sorry. Say it again?
Akara.
Right here with us.
Clearly, you're doing a great job with him. Do you have parents here with you tonight, Pedro? Thank you for joining us. I'm gonna let the rest of the board members thank you in person, and they may have some questions for you, okay? Graciela?
Hi, Pedro. My name's Graciela. What's your favorite subject in school?
Math.
Math? Nice. I love math. It's a fun subject. Thank you for being here. You did a really good job.
Raymond?
Pedro, just wanna thank you for being here today. Thank you for your outstanding leadership. It takes a lot of courage to come to a board meeting and lead everybody in the Pledge of Allegiance, so thank you for your leadership. Thank you to the parents as well. I have a question. What is it that you want to do when you graduate from high school, from the Yakima School District?
I don't know.
Want to go to college? What do you want to be when you grow up? Oh, he's thinking.
There?
A what?
I couldn't hear.
All right, yes. Thank you. And once again, thank you for being here.
Don?
Hi, Pedro. It's good to see you here and bringing your family and being a great example to your little sister. And I like math also, but I love soccer too. And I love all sports, but soccer is another one of my favorite sports. And I know that you will achieve that goal to be a soccer player. Keep up the great work. We are proud of you.
And Norm?
Thank you, Pedro, for coming tonight. Hablas español también? Okay, qué bueno. It's good to know dos lenguas, okay? That'll take you very far. That helps your brain grow. It keeps me on my toes, because I only speak a little. So thanks so much for being here and for being a good student, and you bring a lot of pride to your family, I'm sure.
Pedro, again, I want to thank you on behalf of the board for coming and sharing the pledge with us and leading us in that. And thank you to your parents for being here and to your teacher for being here. And Mr. Mitchell, this may be one of your last things as a principal, huh?
One of my very last appearances as a principal, and I couldn't be more proud.
Excellent. Thank you all for coming tonight. Next item on the agenda is the Yakima Land Acknowledgement, and Norm Walker will be reading that for us tonight.
Today, the schools of the Yakima School District rest on the ancestral lands of the 14 confederated tribes and bands of the Yakima Nation. The people of Yakima Nation inhabited more than 12 million acres across Adams, Benton, Shalan, Douglas, Franklin, Grant, Kititas, Clickitat, and Yakima Counties. Today, we honor those native peoples who are tied to the land through history, legends, and culture. We acknowledge their descendants who live in the world today. We thank the caretakers of this land who have lived here and continue to live here since time immemorial. An acknowledgement is a simple, powerful way to show respect and a step toward correcting the stories and practices that erase indigenous peoples' history and culture. It also honors the truth. As a school district, we will continue to build upon our relations with the Yakima Nation.
Thank you, Norm. Next, we will have a couple moments of silence. We lost two members of our extended Yakima family since our last meeting. I'd like to share with you a little bit about them. Gloria Ofilia Torres was born to Frederico and Petra Rodriguez, both farmworkers, in Weslaco, Texas. She attributed her hard work ethic, strong family values and perseverance, and compassion toward others to her beloved parents. She lived with her parents until early adulthood, and at age 23, she married the love of her life, Raul Torres. Gloria and Raul traveled around the states as migrant workers until they settled down in Washington so that Raul could obtain his teaching degree. Gloria worked several different jobs to help support the family. One of these jobs was as a paraprofessional with the Yakima School District. This is where her lifelong passion of becoming a teacher herself was ignited. Because she didn't want to take time away from her daughters, she would take a class here and there, and then in 1987, she was diagnosed with breast cancer. She did not let this stop her, however, from reaching her goal. She managed to balance working full-time, receiving chemotherapy, attending college, and caring for her family. In 1995, she graduated with her teaching degree at the age of 52. This was not only a great accomplishment for herself, but also served as a reminder to her two girls to never give up on their dreams and goals. Gloria was preceded in death by her parents, all her siblings, and her husband, Raul, who was a former Yakima School District teacher at Lewis and Clark and Davis. Gloria is survived by her two daughters, Norma Lisa Torres Strom, currently the office manager at Hoover Elementary, and Delia Torres, currently a counselor at Barge Lincoln Elementary. Grandchildren Alexa Torres and Johnny Strom, and great-grandson Imari Raul Torres Allen. Our sympathies go out to Gloria's family and friends. She certainly sounded like a Wonder Woman. Our second family member who passed away is Lucille Marie Worley. Lucille was born in Missouri and relocated to Washington State in 1968. She obtained her higher education in Yakima, Washington, and served the Yakima School District as a paraeducator and second-grade teacher for 20 years, after which time she retired. She enjoyed her students so much and remembered every single one of them. Lucille was an avid reader, fisher, and camper. In her younger years, she would throw dance parties in her garage every weekend, dancing to all of her favorite 45 records. She treasured and cherished all people and always had a broad smile to welcome anyone who would come by to visit. Lucille was preceded in death by her parents, Eddie and Edna Andrews, her two brothers, Eddie Junior and Bob Andrews, friend and roommate for 32 years, Judy Griffin, and Judy's son, David Crocker, Crooker. Lucille is survived by her children, Verona Peach Worley, Donald Butch Worley, William Worley, and John Worley, Christopher Worley and her children in spirit, John and Kathy Crooker. She is also survived by her grandchildren, Debbie, Andrea, Shalane, Adriana, Ryan, Nicole, Joshua, Casey, Melody, Tony, Matthew, Devon, JJ, Hannah, Whitney, Brianna, McKenna, Avery, Chris Junior, Lynne, Ashlyn, Lisa, Zach, Nikki, and numerous great and great-great-grandchildren. Our condolences to Mrs. Worley's family and friends. And if we could just take a minute for a moment of silence in recognizing these two outstanding women. Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda are acknowledgements and recognitions. And I'm gonna first apologize to my fellow board members, because I usually assign these, and it completely slipped my mind this time. So if I call on you to read the recognitions, please don't be surprised. Our first recognition is for School Teacher Appreciation Week, which is being held May 3 to 7, 2021. So it's in a couple of weeks. We wanted to make sure that you were aware of this. There will be a proclamation coming out from the governor's office, but we haven't received that yet, correct, Jennifer? Okay. So when we receive that proclamation, we will certainly present it probably at our next study session meeting. But the Board of Directors urges all families and community members to join us in recognizing our teachers and expressing appreciation for their dedication, hard work, and commitment to educate our students. This year has been an especially difficult year to make that happen, and we certainly hope that folks will reach out to their students' teachers or to the teachers that they know and say thank you. Next, we have Classified Employees of the Year for 2021. Graciela, would you mind reading that?
Each year, employees of the Yakima School District nominate fellow employees for the honor of Classified Employee of the Year. The following employees were honored with this distinction at a drive-through celebration held March 24. Alisa Amorans from Martin Luther King Junior Elementary School, Lindsay Bueller, Wilson Middle School, Gary Kim, Whitney Elementary School, Will Park, Central Services Technology Department, Tracy Rennecker, Washington Middle School, and Sabrina Young, Garfield Elementary School. Please join me in a round of applause for these excellent classified employees.
This has become the year for drive-by celebrations. It was very nice. They did a very nice job. Down at the central office for the school district, they had tables out in front. Each school that had a recognition had a table out in front, and it was all decorated up with streamers and balloons and all sorts of things. And people got to drive by and honk and wave and say thank you to these wonderful classified employees, without whom we could not have accomplished what we did this year. So thank you to those folks who were recognized. We also have National School Board Certified Teachers. Norm, could you read that one, please?
I'd love to. These are National Board Certified Teachers. The Yakima School District is proud to announce that four teachers have earned certification from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. To earn this honor, these teachers went through an often grueling, year-long introspective process, which included creating a portfolio of work to document their performance in the classroom, and a series of tests to measure their knowledge in the subjects they teach. Those teachers this year are Brent Daley, Lewis and Clark Middle School, Catherine Graham, Ridgeview Elementary School, Michael Gualionone, AC Davis High School, and Jason Wells from right here at Dwight D. Eisenhower High School.
Are any of those folks with us this evening? Could you stand, please? Would either of you like to talk about this process that you went through? I know it is grueling, and it's gotta be even worse in a year like this.
So I would say it is incredibly grueling. It took me two years. It took me two years to complete the process, and I did it in exceptional needs for special education. And I would highly recommend it be done by any teacher. What it taught me to book for my students, book in my instruction, how to meet my students, was there. I had it. I had it from my teammates. I had it from admin. But it taught me ways to identify it, to use my strengths to best better the team, better my classroom, and I highly recommend it. Be interested in doing it. It was a really good experience.
It's good to hear that. Thank you, Catherine.
Hello, I'm Michael Gualionone. Good job with the last name. It was a great experience. I worked many hours just poring over different students' work and assessment data and just trying to figure out what are my students' actual needs and how can I meet those? How did I meet those, both within the school community, but also the greater Yakima community? So it's an assessment for teachers, but it's also a way that we can build our tools and some of the resources that we have to better serve our students and our community.
And Michael, what was your certification in?
Middle school, or sorry, middle school, middle and young adult mathematics.
Nice. Nice. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, is either Brent or Jason here? I don't think so. We extend our congratulations to them as well. Thank you for sharing that, your process, with us. I know that it takes up an incredible amount of time. And it really does, from what I hear, help you with your teaching process in the classroom. So thank you very much. Next, we have the 2020 Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Technology. Raymond, would you mind reading that?
My pleasure. The Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching are the highest awards bestowed by the United States government specifically for K-12 science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and/or computer science teaching. The awards were established by Congress in 1983. The president may recognize up to 108 exemplary teachers each year. Congratulations to our Yakima School District finalist from Roosevelt Elementary School, Julie Frye.
Julie, do you want to say a few words? No pressure. Just think of this as one great big classroom.
I'm Julie Frye. I teach first grade at Roosevelt Elementary. This is my 30th year. And I've been in the process of remediation, actually, for this award. It started back in 2016. And I liked my scores, but they weren't good enough for the national cut, so I went at it again. It's about two years each time, very similar to National Board. But instead, it's just a deep look at your practice of teaching science. And so here I am again. Each time, my scores get better, and that makes me happy. So we'll see. But my practice has changed so much since the beginning, and I am grateful for the opportunity.
Thank you, Julie. Congratulations. Our Yakima staff continues to do great work, and we appreciate every single one of them. Next, we have reports from members of the board. Are there any board members who wish to report anything to the rest of the board? Raymond? You're on.
Thank you, Martha. I just wanted to highlight this paper. It's called the Five Star Journal. It was sitting here when I arrived, and I'm very impressed with the work that's done by students here. There's like, I think, 30 student writers that actually put this together. When I sat down, I thought, I looked at it, and I thought it was like a major newspaper, right? Or maybe The Herald, or, and I looked into it, dug into it a little bit, very good articles and stuff. Current events that are going on with racism, equity, some of the challenges that are faced by the immigrants that we're experiencing right now. Great, great articles on sports. Also, the graphics, I mean, they're awesome. If you get a chance to see this and read it, I would highly recommend it. So again, I just wanted to commend the 30-year-old student writers from Eisenhower High School and Mr. Diner as well. I don't know who the teacher is or the, do you have the teacher's name or the teachers? Mr. Dewitt. Okay, so please give, I guess, my regards or best for him and job well done on this paper. You just have to take a look at this. It's just an example of great teachers doing good work and students doing awesome, even awesome work. So just wanted to mention this. I like to show off our students and highlight the work, so thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. Anything else from other members of the board?
I would like to take this time, if I may, Madam President, to announce that I will be running for reelection for the Yakima School Board, position two. And I agree with Raymond about highlighting our students, because I get to, every now and then, I get to see and interact with them in their writing. They do a professional job, great journalism, and they have a passion for it. And Mr. McDuff, he is, I mean, if you ever watch him, he's full of energy, and the kids pick up on it. But it's a great thing, and I just wanted to make that announcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Any other members of the board?
Yes, I have a brief report that is kind of more aimed at my fellow board members and probably doesn't have a lot of meaning to the general public. But I serve on what's called the Resolutions Committee for the Washington State School Directors Association. And the Resolutions Committee helps develop and revise and amend what are called the permanent positions. And those are just statements of values and mission and so on for school directors. And we function much like the Washington Principals Association or the School Counselors Association, state associations. So we're a body that seeks to keep perpetuating professional growth in the management of schools. And so anyway, serving on this committee, we, every year, we look at permanent positions. And there are two committees. One is called the Legislative Committee, and actually, Martha's on that committee, and the Resolutions Committee. And they do two separate things. The Legislative Committee looks at legislative proposals and positions, and we're looking more at kind of the organizational, long-term positions. So one of the things that's gonna happen this year, and I'm not gonna go into all the details. If you want to hear the details, go to our regional meeting for directors. But we're looking at doing some major changes in the area of the governance resolutions, because in waiting through all this, one of the things we discovered is that over 25, 30 years, things keep being added to it and added to it and added to it, and a lot of them aren't positions. And one glaring example is all the professional standards, for example, are listed in there. Well, the professional standards are listed elsewhere. And so we're editing out things that aren't positions that are listed in other places within documents within our organization. So again, but anytime you do major changes, you have to recognize that people in the organization have spent a lot of time developing some of those things. But a lot of them are also 40 years old. So again, it's that process of weeding out, and we just wanted to let all our directors around the state know that to not be shocked when changes come up. So just giving you a heads up.
Thank you, Norm. Any other reports from board members?
Yes, I'd also like to announce my intention to run for reelection for the Yakima School Board. We have a really strong strategic plan and are doing incredible work around the topic of equity. I'm energized by the work the district is doing and look forward to continuing that work. Thank you.
The reason that these announcements have been made now is that filing week is coming up the first full week in May. And so these folks will be registering with the auditor's office. And then the primary, if it's necessary to have a primary for these positions, will be held, I think, in August, right? And then the general election will be held in November. Typically, we do this as information for the community, so that the community is aware of whether or not sitting board members are interested in continuing. So thank you all for sharing that. And thank you, Norm, for giving me a little bit of, giving my voice a little bit of rest. I did want to remind board members that the period of time when we propose either permanent positions or legislative positions for consideration at the General Assembly in September is currently open and will be until May 14. So I'm working on a couple and will be coming to the board with those in the next couple of weeks to ask for consideration as to whether the board would consider supporting those and allowing me to submit them on their behalf to the state association. Any other reports? Okay. Next, we have the superintendent update. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, President Rice. It's been quite a day so far, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be here together in person. Only the second time in the last year. I realized tonight that I haven't applauded in so long. All of my recognition has been with happy hands via Zoom, so it's refreshing to be here in person. And I would be remiss if I did not mention, or at least acknowledge, what's currently happening in our country today. As many of you, hopefully all of you, know, the trial for the murder of George Floyd concluded today with a guilty verdict. And I think back almost a year ago, I'm not brought to tears too often, but I was in tears a year ago as I wrote a letter to the community about my feelings and made some promises. to the community about my feelings and made some promises about what we would do collectively. The slow narration that George Floyd engaged in narrating his own death was really the match that lit the flame of outrage across our city and our nation. And as a country, we had failed to practice or combine empathy, courage, and action to move from allies to support those who were systemically oppressed, to become accomplices and engaging in a partnership to achieve equity, justice, and fairness of all people. I shared in the letter that I was angered, and I'll read it in first person. "I am angered by those who stood by complicit in their inaction while a man's last breath left his body during a public strangulation. I am frustrated by the silence and inaction of so many in positions of privilege, a position in which I find myself as superintendent. I am saddened that I have not done more and that we have not done more." And then I noted that anger, frustration, and sadness only change the world when they lead to action, and the Yakima School District is accountable to students' families and the Yakima community for rooting out inequities in our educational system. Since that time, I'm proud to say that we have taken steps as a district and as a board. I'm very proud of our school board, our Board of Directors, and their willingness to continue to grow and set the standard for our educational system here and be a beacon across our state to other school directors. We've done some amazing work. We built out a racial and educational justice department, which did not exist previously, led by Dr. Marcus Pimpleton, who's with us this evening. We have all gained a tremendous amount of knowledge over the last year, and it's not just the board, but throughout our system. And while we have taken positive steps forward through the ongoing racial equity policy work that's been conducted and led by Dr. Pimpleton, through our district equity coalition and our superintendent advisory council, and through racial and educational justice-centered professional learning that took place at all levels in our system, with the board, the cabinet, all of our building leaders, our executive directors, our directors, we still know that our learning and conversation and action is never complete with regard to our struggle to create a more equitable system collectively. There's always more knowledge that we can gain, more perspectives that we can seek to understand, and more changes that we can make. And the Yakima School District is still committed to engaging in important learning, conversations, and action when it comes to advancing racial and educational justice. Again, I am proud of the work of our district and what we do for our students and our families every day, and I'm also proud that we have embraced the opportunity to have difficult conversations in public, ask tough questions, and I'm also proud of our ability to fully acknowledge that our learning is never done. So thank you for allowing me to reflect on what's happening across our country currently. I do not see the guilty verdict as an end, but it's more of a stamp of the failings that we have engaged in as a society and the opportunities that we have to come together and move forward collectively. With that, I'll switch to more matters close to our home situation here. And I would like to acknowledge that our state superintendent of public instruction has reached out about not administering the smarter balance assessments for the state of Washington this spring. And I would ask Dr. Darling to share a little bit more of that information with the board at this time.
Good evening, board. So as Superintendent Green stated, actually, when Superintendent Reit was here a couple weeks ago, we talked quite a bit about this assessment, and he was in, he had just received word that this, that he kept calling Washington was not going to, the other Washington, was not going to grant the waiver that we've been requesting. But he said that he had heard very clearly from the districts that forcing an assessment, the state assessments on students this year, which is unfair, and unfair to students, unfair to teachers. And so I'm proud that they elected to opt out. We still will require to do the state assessment, but it will happen fall of next school year. We are, there are still assessments that we still need to do. Our students, our English learners, will still have to do their WITA assessment, and our students that are experiencing cognitive delays and on IEPs for such will still have to do the WA aims. Those will still be done, though in a little bit shorter manner, but the statewide, it's third grade through 12th grade testing will not happen this year.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Darling. Members of the board, do you have any questions about the state assessments? Any follow-up?
I don't see any.
Wonderful, thank you. The only other item that I would currently share, board interest, is that our Yakima online numbers and Open Doors numbers, as compared to last year, are up significantly. I don't think that would be a surprise, but I don't think it's entirely due to the pandemic. I know that we have taken a more intentional focus about those options for our students. So our Yakima online attendance or involvement actually is increased 138% as compared to last year.
Wow.
And Open Doors is up 44% compared to last year. And I look forward to bringing you some more information about our new Seoul Online program and expect that in the coming month.
Excellent. Now, for those who don't know, could you just briefly tell us what Open Doors is?
Yes, so we have several schools in our district, the traditional high schools. We have Stanton, that's one of our alternatives, it's our alternative setting as well. And we have an online opportunity for students, which is Yakima Online. And Open Doors is a school that students can attend and actually have more flexibility regarding their schedule. So it's not an online option, but it is an in-person option, and both that online and Open Doors are offered over near our skill center down by the fairgrounds. So we do have a small facility behind the skill center where that does happen, the tech center, YB Tech, using the old language there from a while back.
Thank you, Trevor.
Yes. That concludes my initial superintendent report.
Next on the agenda, we have the superintendent COVID-19 update.
Thank you. And for this update, I would certainly hope that you could access the documents.
We have them.
Wonderful. And I will turn the time over actually to our Assistant Superintendent Stacy Locke.
So this report is last week's COVID update. And if you could focus your attention on the next slide, which is the weekly COVID contact tracing and investigations for 2021. On the far right, you can see that we had 173 investigations last week, by far numerous more than we've ever had. We had been hitting over 100 for the last three weeks prior to, and then last week, we ended up with 173 cases, or not cases, investigations. And I cannot thank our health service staff enough for all the work that they're doing to help keep everybody safe. If you go down to the next slide, our weekly positive cases for last week, COVID cases, we had 23 student positive cases and six adult positive cases for a total of 29. And as you can see, the progression since January, that is an extremely large number of positive COVID cases. When I talked to Ryan Ibach at the Yakima County Health Department today, they had only received six staff and six student cases throughout the county. Ours arrived on Sunday night, and it was not entered into the information for Monday morning superintendent meeting. So he will be sharing those numbers next week. In addition, if you go to the next slide, it graphically shows you the increase that we're seeing over the last couple, three weeks and the rise of the cases. In the following slide concerning asymptomatic testing, you can see that it was a little light last week with 21 staff members volunteering to do asymptomatic testing. So since January 4th, we have administered 606 asymptomatic-type oral swab tests. In the works, I'm going to talk here after Jewel shares about vaccine opportunities at our school sites through mobile clinics. And if there are no questions at this time, I would like to introduce my colleague Jewel Brumley to share with her latest statistics around COVID in our county. Additionally, Ryan Ibach shared today that they would be using, they would know Friday what numbers the state will be using, the Department of Health will be using to identify what phase that we're going to be in on May 3rd. And so we've asked, I've asked that we get that preliminary information so that we may begin to plan. Our COVID response team will begin to, can begin to plan moving forward, as well as our cabinet with what's going on. So we'll have a general idea this Friday. We absolutely will not meet the positive case metric, but we may be able to meet the hospitalization metric. But again, they're still not sure what seven-day window the state is going to use until this coming Friday. Jewel, are you ready? Yeah, I'd like to turn this over to Jewel Brumley for the next part of our COVID report.
So daily cases have kind of gone up and down. We hit a high of 97 cases. Okay, go on to the next slide. So as you can see by the daily cases, we did have the real small number. We had 10 cases on Sunday, and then 31, and then 45, 43 today. The 14-day rate is 260. We've come down from 286 per 100,000. The seven-day rate, the seven-day rate actually went up in the last week to 134.7 from 129, so it did go up a little in the last week in the county rate per 100,000. Next. The ZIP Code data, if you notice, it jumped up quite a bit last week, or the week before, and then last week, it still jumped in the 98902, which is totally encompassed in Yakima School District. And then it did go up in 98901. It came down a little in the 98908, which, obviously Eisenhower is in, and so there's, that's part of that, but that's part of West Valley. And then Union Gap also went up last week. Still, it came down a little bit. Hospitalizations, depending on when they select our hospitalizations, we stayed at pretty much for the month of April in the high teens through the 20s. We hit 13 a couple days in a row. We went up to 20, and today we're down to 14 in the hospital, but four are intubated. Our positivity rate as of April 18th went down to 10.7 from the 11.9, but we're kind of hovering right around 10% positive on all our weeks for April. This is the school-age cases that Yakima was not included in, I guess. So only seven new students, seven new staff in the report that came out Monday from the Health Department. 51 were ninth through 12th graders and 48, sixth through eighth grade, and then K5 was The school-age data over time, if you notice, the April 7th dates, April 17th dates, that's a typo. Our positive rate went up to 18% of the county rates, and all of the bars, K5, 6, 8, and 9, 12, did go up this last week. That ended on April 17th. Sorry about the typo. Okay, our forecast, I redid our forecast. If you remember, the last little jump in our forecasted cases, our spike, the spike in the forecast from the calculations I do didn't go up until probably this week. So I took all the data from the last two weeks, added it into the whole forecast calculations, and this is our new forecast. Next slide has the update of the focus area. And then here it is up close. So you notice the scale difference. It only goes up to 500. We actually are still going up according to the forecast, and we'd peak at about 400 cases per 100,000. And it will come back down, kind of level off a little bit towards the end of the school year. Again, the long-range forecast to the end of the school year, you know, it's kind of like the weather forecast. If you get further away from the data, it might have errors, but it's been a pretty good calculation so far. Any questions?
Thank you, Jewel. Any questions from board members?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jewel. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Jewel. And so what we have in the works is we're working with the Emergency Operations Center, and we are going to have, they have four mobile vaccination units. And currently, we've set times in May for them to visit 12 of our school sites, some of them on Saturdays, with the primary focus to have an opportunity to vaccinate our high school kids. And in fact, the Health Department, local Health Department's put on a challenge to see whether Davis or Ike, which students are going to win the competition to receive the most vaccines.
Oh, good, a high school competition. We haven't had enough of those.
Yes, yes. And it's actually, they've offered that up to every district in the county. And so our high schools will be involved with that. Additionally, we identified 12 sites around our district that we felt would best serve our community populations that could walk to the school to receive the vaccination and really focus on our parents that may not be able to drive or may not be able to get, you know, get to a clinic or may even feel intimidated by going to a clinic. So they can go to their local school, they can walk up. We're going to also have registration information, but it will, Kirsten's going to help us when we get all the dates and times put together. Go ahead and advertise that, make that a real push to get everybody involved that wants to receive a vaccine, both the first shot, and then they'll also receive a card to pick up the second shot, either 21 or 28 days later, depending on what vaccination formula they receive. And again, it's an outreach to have parents and community members feel comfortable coming to their local school sites. Nobody's going to be dressed in army fatigues or anything that will be administering the vaccination. It's, they're going to be, it's a private company that emergency management has employed to be able to provide this service throughout our, the Yakima area. But we were really excited to be able to get that many dates and opportunities, and I've contacted those administrators tonight to find out who their contact person would be so we can move forward with pre-planning and putting everything in place. So we're very excited as a COVID response team that that's our next step in the work that we've been doing for the last year. So just wanted to share that with you this evening.
That's excellent news, Stacy. Thank you so much. Trevor, did you have anything to add on this?
No, I simply, I always say no, and then I add something. I noticed that. People do that. Yes, I have something to add. Just again, gratitude to both Stacy for leading our continued phenomenal leadership with our COVID response team and Jewel for the work that you do, the new projections to look at the trend data. I am so confident with the numbers and the transparency that we're displaying as a district. It's very inspiring, and I just, I just wish that was happening everywhere. But I feel like we're really leading the way in putting everything out there for our community to see and understand. And I do recognize that it is, continues to be frustrating for, and confusing, I think, for people when they see surrounding communities and the decisions that are being made and why there and not here. And I think when you're in a, when you come here and you're able to see the information, it becomes a little bit more clear. And I would invite anybody here in the audience, but also those that are watching, that if you do have any questions, I respond to any positive and negative, both sides of why and how come, and I'm willing to engage in personal conversation, phone calls, whatever you would like to understand exactly why we're where we're. whatever you would like to, to understand exactly why we're where we are. So that invitation remains open, and I would love to see more people take advantage of that because we really want people to understand why we're doing what we do. And it is because of the science that we're seeing and putting safety first. And I really am looking forward to a time where we are back completely in session. But again, thank you for all of the information, Stacy and Jewel, and having that to us every week.
Thank you, Trevor. Any questions from board members?
I have one. Is parental consent required for student vaccinations? Just wondering about that.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. And there, there will be options in place to make sure that happens prior to administering a vaccine to a student.
So anyone under 18, right? 18-year-olds don't need parental
Correct.
permission?
Correct.
Okay.
They're trying to make it as easy as possible with like a FaceTime or a phone call even to a parent. So they are putting some controls in place, but they're not trying to put up barriers to keep people from being vaccinated.
Yeah, that, that's correct. And that's what's going on at the Sun Dome, and I'm sure we'll be following similar measures with Emergency Management and the mobile clinics.
Thank you, Stacy. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I just have, actually, two. One is, do we know whether any of those student and staff transmissions occurred at school?
They have not.
So we have no transmissions within the buildings? It's all from outside influences, right?
Correct. It's, it's, we have a few things in place where if, if a, a tense person calls a parent and they say so-and-so is not at school today because of the attestation, we begin that contact tracing at that point in time. So that individual may not have ever even showed up at our campus due to that attestation. And so we're tracking it that way. The other thing is if the, the signs and symptoms, immediately going through the primary signs and symptoms and the secondary signs and symptoms on the attestation, they are right on that. And we end up sending people home, and the nurse and health assistant continue that contact tracing until we've got to the third level where we're not concerned about potential. We've stopped the mitigation or the transfer of that, so.
That's good news.
Yes.
Thank you for being so proactive on that.
You're welcome. Safety first for students and staff and families.
There you go. The other question is about the 12 sites. Are we prepared to say which 12 sites they are, or are we going to wait for a bit?
If, if I had them memorized, I would. But I don't, I don't have them all memorized. Davis and Ike, for sure. I can, I can name a few of them. Adams, Barge, Ridgeview, MLK, Hoover. I'm sure I'll leave somebody out. I don't want to go any further. Those are some of those, some of those sites.
But that'll be part of the rollout of the communications to
Correct.
both to parents and families and to the community as a whole, correct?
Correct. Because anybody is eligible to get that vaccination, not just Yakima School District parents and families. So anybody is eligible to get it.
Excellent.
And, and with Davis and Ike, because the, there's a major focus on, on students receiving vaccinations, and they're in a hybrid model, we'll do a, like a Monday or a Tuesday at Ike and Davis with two mobiles, and then we'll do a Thursday or Friday at Ike and Davis with two mobiles. So they end up taking up a majority of the time, but that's where the majority of our students are located.
Great. I hope people take advantage of that. That's quite an opportunity. Thank you, Stacy. Any other questions?
Thank you, Director Rice.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is a summer school update. Mr. Superintendent, do you want to introduce Heather?
Absolutely. I would, I would love to. I'm, I'm excited to introduce Heather Hasty, our Assistant Principal at Davis High School. She's a wonderful treasure to have here in the district, and she's leading our summer school planning. I would also like to recognize publicly that Heather was just accepted into the doctoral program at the University of Washington. Congratulations.
So you don't have enough to do on your day job, right?
That's right. Along with, who is not here, but Maria Lucero was accepted in as well. So we're excited, so for her as well.
Congratulations.
So we are looking forward to the great things that will be happening in the next three years as she pursues her doctorate and embeds that work into what she does at Davis and wherever she ends up in our district. So thank you for that. Congratulations, and we look forward to the presentation this evening. Heather?
Thank you. Good evening, School Board, Cabinet, and Community Members. I'm going to be reporting on what our opportunities for our students for summer school are this summer. And first of all, the summer school will be running from June 21st through July 23rd this year. And the purpose of our summer school this year is to provide opportunities to accelerate and to enrich student learning. Opportunities will be available in literacy, science, technology, engineering, arts, mathematics, or STEAM, and secondary content areas. The elementary summer programs that will be running this summer, we are excited to be able to do pre-K. And it says six classrooms, but actually, we will probably have seven classrooms because we have enough staff interested, which will serve about 140 of our pre-K students who will be entering the kinders in the fall. And the funding for that will be provided with the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds. And it will take place at Adams Elementary. And the times for that, you can see on the bottom, the times for that, 8:30 to 11:30. I put times and locations subject, subject to change just because if we end up with a lot of students, that we want to serve as many as possible. And so we may have to utilize another building if, if we had more students. So the K1, Adams Elementary, will host the district summer school for K1. We'll have approximately 20 classrooms. Again, that could change if we have more student interest. Right now, we are identifying students for the K1, 2, and 3 by the 20th percentile on the Acadiants Assessment. And it would be funded through the Learning Assistance Program and the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. So we'd also have grades 2 and 3 running, but they would have to, they will, will be running at Roosevelt Elementary. Again, a literacy focus and with the same funding source. Due to the sheer size of it, we needed to utilize that. As far as the K3, there'll be almost 2,100 students who are invited for the K3. And then the times, again, 8:30 to 11:30. It's possible that we'd run an A/B cohort model, but depending upon our staffing and student interest, we, if we have enough staffing, and we are willing to, if we don't have enough staffing inside of the district, we will open it up to outside of the district. But we want to try to serve them as much as possible. It will be running Monday through Thursday. We'd like to have the students here all four days. And then breakfast for the younger guys will be served onsite, and then lunch will be a grab and go, and they will have school-provided transportation. The secondary summer school programs, 6 to 8, Washington Middle School, will be running a program, multiple subjects. They will be funded through the Office of System and School Improvement and Title I, and that will be all Washington Middle School students at that site. The 6 through 8 at Franklin Middle School, also multi-subject, will include students from Lewis and Clark, Franklin, and Wilson as well. And so we're excited that all middle school students will have an opportunity to be served. The 9 through 10, Davis, Eisenhower, Stanton, and I just noticed I left off Yakima Online, Lewis Menard, I'm very sorry, because they will be running a program as well for Yakima Online. And the 9, 10 will be a standards-based credit retrieval and project-based learning that will be funded through Title I. And then 11, 12, same sites, inclusive of Yakima Online, Davis, Eisenhower, Stanton, and online, multiple subjects, and it will be funded through the Learning Assistant Program, and it will be credit retrieval and project-based, standards-based credit retrieval. The times will run our 9 to 12:30 at the high schools and 9 to 1 at the middle schools. And then there, they'll have a grab and go breakfast and lunch at the end of the day. And then they will utilize public transportation, which we will provide the bus tickets for, for them. The secondary, or Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, Mathematics Programs, so the STEAM programs this summer. K5, Gilbert will be basically our STEAM campus, K5. Career and Technical funded, also possibly funded by the Emergency Relief Funds. And 6 to 8 STEAM camps will run at Franklin Middle School. Career and Technical Education funded, same funding sources for all three of these. And 9 through 12, Davis, I put and/or Ike. And so we'll see how many students we get interested. All students K through 12 will be invited to this particular program. One of the reasons you see the times to be determined is that we may run some of the programs, especially the K5, day-long programs with lunch served in between. And so you'll get more information on that by, actually, by the end of the week. The migrant summer program will run K5 virtual 12 to 18 classes. It will focus on STEAM and literacy. These are all migrant-funded. The 6 to 8 virtual, three classes, possibly more classes, 1,000 students. We have approximately 1,000 migrant students, and they will all be invited. We'll see how many take the invitation. The times the program would run is between 3 and 8 PM. And I added on that slide after speaking to the director as well, but a survey indicated that migrant parents like the flexibility of the timeframe. Additionally, the Migrant Parent Advisory Council, the PAC, approved it citing the flexibility, the individualized instruction, and the fact that students could have multiple opportunities during the day to optimize their learning. In other words, the student could attend any of the other programs during the day and attend this virtually in the evenings. They have a teacher who provides online instruction, and then they also set up individual meetings with each student every week. Office of System and School Improvement and the 21st Century. These are two other opportunities, but there are some schools we have in our district who have remaining Office of System and School Improvement funds that may submit proposals. The two that I know of are Adams Elementary. The two I know of who would like to do this, Adams Elementary for their 4th and 5th graders. And then McClure Elementary has connected with me as well to provide instruction for their 4th and 5th graders, and they're working on those proposals currently. And then the 21st Century Grant Schools will meet with the ESD at the end of April. Actually, a couple of them had a meeting this past Friday to determine their summer programming based on the grants that were written. Okay, the other piece to this too is we anticipate the total number of students for summer at about 6,000 to 6,200. In the past, we've had approximately 1/3 of students invited attend, and so that's what we're basing those numbers on. Again, I talked about the staffing piece of it, and staffing just dependent upon how many staff we get internally will be dependent upon how many staff that we would hire externally as well, being able to serve as many students as possible and doing a real push for students to be attending and coming to the summer programs, given that they're, it's not just credit retrieval this summer. We have enrichment. We have a lot of different opportunities this summer, which is what we're really excited about. And I, I know it will be a really good and effective summer program. The way that we're going to be measuring effectiveness varies by the programs. For example, let me tell you, because I wrote this down just before I came, but for the K3 that are invited, they will be measuring through ICE Station. They have pre-imposed assessments. For the pre-K, they use the measure for transitional kinder that aligns with WAC kids. For the secondary summer programs at the high school levels, we, it's the numbers we begin with, and then the numbers who receive credit or improve upon their percentage during the summer programs that we, how we measure the effectiveness of that. And then our STEAM camps will be using a program tool based on the Common Instructional Suite and Dimensions of Success for that. And that is one that I know that from Dr. Andy Webb I will find out more about because she's very familiar with it. I'm not as familiar, and so I'll familiarize myself with that. And then the migrant summer program, they will utilize a pre- and post-DIBELS literacy data and then a curriculum-based assessment for mathematics.
Well, that was a lot of information and a little bit of time. Thank you, Heather. Any questions from board members?
I had just one question. I know that you have a lot of credit opportunities, retrieval opportunities. I'm curious if the high school-level STEAM camp can also offer elective credit to kids?
Absolutely. And there's a few things that will be a little bit different, too. In the, in the past, at the high school levels, we've offered primarily ELA mathematics, science, and history. And this year, we'll be able to offer even electives. We can offer arts programs. We can offer a multitude of things, even just in the credit retrieval. But the STEAM, the STEAM camps and those parts will be credit, credit-bearing. And so whether the student needs credit or not, even if it's enrichment, they'll still receive additional credits.
Other questions? Heather, I did have a question about 4th and 5th grade.
Yes.
Other than Adams and McClure and any, any of the 4th and 5th graders who want to take advantage of STEAM, there are no remediation-type opportunities for students in schools other than Adams and McClure, correct?
Correct, except for the STEAM opportunities. That's more of an enrichment at that level.
Okay. I'm going to put you on the spot here.
Okay.
And ask a simple question, why?
That's a great question, and it's something that we can be working on. One of, one of the things that I expected was more of our, what I call Aussie schools, so Office of System and School Improvement schools wanting to offer. We have a lot of buildings that are not available building-wise, and I'm trying to encourage them to participate at other sites with their students. And I know that's difficult sometimes for people because they don't feel that the students would show. But there is still the possibility that you will see 4th and 5th coming out with some of the other buildings, even though they don't have a physical building and they'd have to be housed in a different spot. So we, by the end of this week, everybody's supposed to have any proposals in. And we could, we could consider, we will be considering other opportunities as they come in from the principals.
So as this changes, you'll keep us updated, right?
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you. And just a, because I think this, I think you said this, and I think I heard it, but at this point in the day, I'm not quite sure what I hear sometimes.
Okay.
You said that elementary, so the K through, or pre-K through 5 will have school district transportation, correct?
Yes.
And the 6 through 12, they'll get a voucher for public transportation?
Let me correct myself, because it's pre-K through 8 that would be district transportation, and that's 9 through 12 that is running with the public transportation with the vouchers.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Thanks for that clarification. And we'll be getting this information out to families?
Absolutely. So we're in the process already of hiring for teachers. And then after that's completed, after this week, when we know if any other proposals are going forward, then we'll start doing the invitations for all the students with the different programs, making sure we're very clear about what the different programs are so that families understand the opportunities.
And we'll factor in some kind of, I don't know, assessment or pre- and post so that you've got, you've got a, an idea about how students have improved over this period of time?
Yes, and each program has their own individual assessments that they utilize. And so when we do the board reporting at the end, you'll, you'll have all of that information too, as far as the success and the effectiveness of the programs as far as, and success of individual kids.
Perfect. Well, this is certainly an ambitious plan, and I hope that you are successful. I know that, I know that this year has certainly been a challenge for our, our little ones and even our bigger ones. And any opportunities that we can provide to them to improve their learning or catch them up as needed, I think is really going to benefit them as they move throughout the schools, school district system. So thank you, Heather. It's a great report.
Thank you.
Trevor, do you have anything to add? Trevor, do you have anything to add?
Nothing further.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have our monthly financial update. You want to introduce Becky or just?
Absolutely, no, I will introduce Becky here. She's gonna contribute in a moment, but I would draw your attention again to the PowerPoint. The general fund budget and financial status update. If you'll go to the second slide, you will see the executive summary that Becky has prepared, but I would just like to touch upon those points before passing it to her. For the audience, we have a, the district received notice of the official ESER grant award, and the, I should probably take a moment to define that. So when you're talking about ESER funding, under the E-S-S-E-R Fund, established as part of the Educational Stabilization Fund and the CARES Act, we do receive funding to combat expenses related to COVID and preventative measures, responsive measures as well. And that grant award in the amount of 22.4 million. We did receive notice of that and access to that with an expendable budget of 20.4 million. So that is great news for us as a district to help with the expense related to, to COVID. We've exhausted our ESER 1 funding. The enrollment, however, decreased in our district, 88 FTE compared to February. As of March 31, 2021, we are currently 2.5% below our budgeted FTE count. You will notice in the third bullet, the, that we received, the next two bullets are some great news as well for us. We received K-12, pre-K-12 Internet Access Grant from OSPI in the amount of $201,605, $201,605, and received additional funds through InvestEd for all and for digital equity in the amount of $56,390. So we're looking at over a quarter of a million dollars to go towards internet and digital access. So that is something that's, that's great. So thank you, Becky, for preparing that information. Do you have any questions about the executive summary? I believe some of that could be answered through Becky's presentation, but does, any of those four points, any clarification needed, any questions?
Any questions from the board?
All right. Becky, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you Superintendent Green. Good evening, board. So we'll go ahead and go through the graphs. So this, this is the five-year actual FTE, K-12 and ALE enrollment. You can see that our, our current year, which is the blue line, is getting smaller. And so Superintendent Green and I talked about changing this slide up just a little bit. So for next month, we'll have a, so you can see a little bit better for this year's enrollment. Next slide, please. And this one is the all programs. And you can see the dashed line. This is compared against budget. See, we are declining. Next slide. So in our revenues, this is the revenue graph. We are trending just about the same as last year and just under budget. And that, the reason is for the enrollment decline and then the transportation revenue loss. And we talked about that last month. Next slide. And this is the cash flow. So you can see that we're just under budget. And then this is our total expenditures. And again, we're just about the same as last year and just under budget. And then the payroll trend. Again, I sound kind of like a broken record, we're just about equal with last year. And then our materials and supplies, our MSOC, so everything in the expenditures other than payroll. And again, we're just about the same as last year. The green bar versus the blue and under budget. The budget is a black. And then this is our pandemic cost slide, updated with figures through March. And you can see that our, the bulk of our costs are in the third column with the distance learning. And the final slide. This is updated with all of our current revenue sources for, to support the pandemic with the ESER 2 added in now and the GEAR grant and the K-12 Internet Access Grant. And then the first column is all the funds available. And then the second column has the total dollars we've spent, which is at 10 million as of March 31.
Any questions from board members? Again, a very thorough presentation. Thank you, Becky. I hope that this simplified and more transparent version is, helps the community in understanding the complexities of a school district's budget. We've worked, well, we, the royal we, Becky, has worked very hard to make these much more understandable, and, and I think she's done a great job. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything to add?
Nothing further.
Okay. Next item on the agenda are comments from the public on agenda items. These are items that have appeared on, on our agenda so far or will appear on our agenda for the rest of the meeting. And members of the public are invited to speak on these items. Because we are in kind of a hybrid meeting model process, typically pre-COVID, folks would have just signed in on a sheet at the front of the room and, or the back of the room, and we would have had that delivered to the board and called folks up. But given the situation that we're in now, there is a process outlined on the district's website where folks fill out a form notifying the executive assistant that they wish to speak to the board at Public Comment. And we have had two folks, two folks who have filled that out and submitted that. And I've determined that both of these items are items that are on our agenda. And so, first person is Phyllis Frank. As she's making her way to the microphone, I want to remind folks that the purpose of community input is for the board to hear concerns from the community. Speakers will be treated in a respectful manner. The board does not engage in dialogue at this time and typically, or typically respond to items that are not on the agenda. The audience is expected to give their full attention to the speaker. Members, members of the public who will be speaking are expected to introduce themselves, state all affiliations with the district. Comment on agenda items, as, as I said, occurs during this first comment period. During the second comment period, which comes at the end of the meeting, those will, that would be a time for items that are not on the agenda. It is much brighter with that screen up, so you may notice all of us squinting up here for a while. Third-party letters to the board will be provided to the executive assistant and read, and not read at the microphone. Members of the, of the audience are, are asked to refrain from discussing the performance of an employee or the interpretation or application of the district's labor agreements, including grievances, and refrain from making derogatory comments about individuals. Would like you to stick as close to three minutes as you can. And I have a timer up here that has a very obnoxious sound at the end of it, so we would encourage you to honor that time commitment. So Bunker, whenever you're ready.
Yes. Martha, as you know, I'm Phyllis Bunker-Frank. It was my privilege to serve on the Yakima School Board for 12 years, a lot of years ago. That was followed by 16 years as a member of the State Board of Education. But I'm most proud of being a retired educator myself, speech and language pathologist, parent of Yakima School District child, and now a bubby, a grandmother. And so education of our children, all children, has been vitally important. I'm speaking here, actually, I came primarily to hear the summer school report. And, but I'd like to add a note of concern to the COVID count and keeping the COVID count because it relates very much to my comments. For probably now close to 25 years, I've been an advocate for continuous connected learning around the year through the most efficient, effective, and equitable use of the 180 days that we have required for children to attend school, for parents to attend, send their children to school, and for our professionals to show up with their best work. And we know that they do, each and every day they see children. We have before us, again, for another year, planning for learning loss. And this particular year is so very dramatic. I am, after hearing the COVID count report and realizing that, not sure what the last day of school is, but early June, we will lose track of COVID count for our students until September. And if even we had, could shorten summer by four or five weeks and have opportunity for acceleration and enrichment around the year, we would have a better handle probably also on COVID count. Heather, in listening to your report, you stated something that I have known and I've collected summer school reports for many, many years. You stated that 6,000-plus students will be invited, and that was very exciting to hear in a district that has 15,000 students and has very high percentage of students on free and reduced lunch. But you also said something else that I know to be true, and that is that you expect only about 1/3 of the students to attend consistently. And these are students who have been collected, learning loss, partially learning standards around the year. And probably everyone in this room, when they were sent to school by their parents, said, "Do your best work or you'll have to go to summer school. Work hard or you'll have to go to summer school." So I guess I'm back to advocate for and talk about us taking a real serious look at the end of the summer school period on the children who attended 90% of the time, the number of children that attended based on the original numbers, excuse me. And consider whether or not now is a time to truly develop and talk about around-the-year learning with timely intercessions, intercession to accelerate, to enrich, to intervene so that learning has a better chance of being a presence in the lives of all of our children in a consistent way. And the same kinds of enriching experiences appear around the year. So let's keep track of that data really well. I look forward to adding to my file on summer school reports and then taking a real serious look at how that fits in with what we know about learning and forgetting. Thank you.
Thank you, Bunker. Next, we have Jeremy Freeze. Did I say that right, Jeremy?
Am I gonna start?
You're good to go whenever you, whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much. My, my name's Jeremy Freeze, and this evening, a little later in the meeting, my name's gonna be on a new hire list for you guys to vote on. And I just wanted to take a few minutes to thank you guys, to, to tell you, you guys are, are making a young, young man's dream come true. As, as a kindergartner, I entered Hoover Elementary myself. I was a Hoover Husky, Ed Cavell's kindergarten class. And he, at a young age, gave me a, a big appreciation for music. And we used to go to the piano, we had colored keys, we'd play on his piano. And if you guys know Ed, what an amazing educator. Graduated with my parents, I've known him my whole life, friends with his kids, just a, a big person in my life. Nora Ranta for General Music, she developed a love for me to sing as a young man. Hoover was huge, walked to school, great, great community, great neighborhood. Middle school, I was the first middle school class at Lewis and Clark. I, it was the first year they went from a junior high to a middle school. And so I got to go and be a member of, of that, that new learning environment. We had 6th graders come with us, I was kind of mad. You know, as a 6th grader, you're like, "We're getting rid of these young kids, then they go to middle school with us." It was awful. Loved my time at Lewis and Clark, participated in every sport that they had, just had a great love and, and passion for sports in 7th and 8th grade. Day before high school, there's a soccer tournament in Spokane with my brother, he was my coach. I slide tackle and break my shin bone in half. So I enter Eisenhower High School my first day in a wheelchair. I walk into band, I roll into band class, and Lori Liefert at the time, she's like, "Just go s-" in the, I was a nuisance, you know, in my wheelchair. And I pick up my trumpet, I play the first note, and she's like, "Um, let's get you in the trumpet section." She wheels me into that trumpet section as a freshman. And sophomore year, I got to help her with the freshman band as I went into the cadet band at the time. And I was like, "I kind of like this music thing, I think I might try to do something with this." And I, I remember my, my final concert in the old building, in the cafeteria, and in between songs, our band director was talking. I remember thinking to myself like, "Man, wouldn't it be great someday to come back and be the band director at Eisenhower High School?" And I was just, that has been a passion. I loved Dave Walter, he's, he's a good friend of mine. And every year, I'd be like, "Dave, how much time you got left, buddy?" And, yeah, it's, it's kind of been a dream, and I've been watching it happen. And I knew this year was gonna, gonna be the, the end of a long career of his that he's spent with the Yakima School District. And I just want to tell you guys, I've been sitting there listening very closely. Leadership to me is very important. I have been extremely impressed by my future leadership. Your guys' diligence to be respectful, speaking truly and inappropriately about the kids and your passion for the kids. Heard little Pedro come up here, and he's talking about his teacher, Mrs. McKelrath, McElrath. My 3rd grade teacher was Mrs. McElrath. And I was just like, "What a dream to come back and, and be able to end my career here at Eisenhower." And Mr. Diner, we go way back, over 20 years of our friendship, and to know that I have great leadership here at Eisenhower, I just couldn't be more proud and excited to be a cadet and, and to have the opportunity to work for you guys. Thank you very much for your time. I look forward to meeting, meeting all of you and, and getting to know you guys really well.
Welcome back home, Jeremy.
Thank you, guys, that means a lot.
I have no one else who has signed up, so we'll move on. Next item on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is comprised of groupings of items that the board is required to approve by statute. And the board members may have the opportunity to remove one or more items from the consent agenda for separate action and/or discussion. Tonight's consent agenda consists of approval of minutes for March 1, 8, 16, 22, and 29 meetings, approval of board attendance to the 2021 National School Board Association Advocacy Institute. It's a virtual institute this year. Approval of personnel actions. Budget status reports for March 2021. And notification of approval of warrants. Tonight's warrants consist of three groups of general fund warrants, one group of ASB warrants, and one group of payroll warrants. Does any board member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for separate action and/or discussion? I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Norm, seconded by Don. Is there any discussion? Jennifer, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Norm Walker.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Vianuueva.
Aye.
Reverend Davis, Jr.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you so much. Next, we have a group of action items for approval. First item on our agenda is the permission to pay Running Start Program winter quarterly fees. Dr. Darling.
Thank you, Director Rice. So the Running Start Program is a partnership between the Yakima Valley College and Yakima Public Schools. Running Start allows eligible high school students the opportunity to obtain college credits at a reduced cost. This quarter, 173 students from Davis, Eisenhower High Schools, Stanton Academy, and Yakima Online have benefited from this program. So we requested the board directors grant permission to pay YVC for the Running Start Program tuition and fees for the winter quarter of 2020, 2021 in the amount of $425,520.94.
Thank you. Are there any questions from board members? I would entertain a motion for the board to grant permission to pay Yakima Valley Community College for the Running Start Program tuition and fees for the winter quarter 2020 to 21 in the amount of $425,520.94.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Don, seconded by Norm. Is there any discussion? Barb, could you call roll, please?
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Ms. Vianuueva.
Aye.
Reverend Davis, Jr.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the agreement between, um, the Yakima Association of Business, no, Building Services and the Yakima School District. Anthony?
Thank you, Martha. Summarize the agreement. We were successful in negotiating the three-year agreement with our Gab's labor partners. Some of the highlights of the agreement, uh, there was some language around maximum of 560 hours per rolling 12 months for temporary employees to be considered temporary. Language regarding the set requirements that came into effect a couple of years ago when we switched from our own trust to the state's mandatory health insurance. Many housekeeping opportunities to clarify practices that had no substantive change but made it easier and clearer to follow the agreement regarding hiring practices, lateral transfers, transfers consisting of paying. We were successful in getting unassigned positions, backfill for absences in place of using substitutes. We had an increase of rollover benefits consistent with other agreements which we had throughout the district. The three-year agreement have a 3% increase for the first year, 2% or IPD, whichever is greater, which, uh, the, based on the governor's budget, will pass at 2% this year. One and a half percent increase or IPD, whichever is greater for the year to be, one and a half percent increase to the steps. Securing a three-year agreement really helps us have some labor peace and helps us to establish better practices for building services. Really want to take the opportunity to thank the former leadership, Emmanuel Brahas and Kevin Cummings, who transitioned out in our new leadership, which transitioned in the middle of the bargain, which also, uh, brought to it its challenges, but I think we're able to get a very good agreement because of it. I'd like to thank President Lucas Ozuna, uh, his other staff members, Fidel Gomez, Brian Dennis, Colin Rexroth, Chris Erlacher, Nancy Valenta, the WEA mid-state rep, along with the district team, Director Sherry Chapman, Director Stephanie Arnold, Director Manuel Orozco, our two new supervisors to the Yakima Building, um, Services Department, Murray Campbell and Arado Rivera. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Are there any questions from board members? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion that the board of directors approve the agreement between the Yakima Association of Building Services and the Yakima School District.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Graciela, seconded by Don. Is there any discussion? Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Vianuueva.
Aye.
Reverend Davis.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of new course equivalencies for the Career and Technical Education Program effective for this year, the 2021 school year. Dr. Darling.
Thank you, Director Arros. So the request for RCW 28A.230.097 subsection two of the statute addresses the need for all students to be able to pursue academically rigorous CTE courses by providing a viable remedy to the constraints placed on transcript course titles by higher education admission practices. Essentially, when we have new CTE courses that we can offer, we have to show that they are equivalent of graduation credits so the students can receive the 24 credits. Part of our operating procedure is that we, we, we submit these proposals to the board for approval. And so the equivalency proves there's two CTE courses that we're adding. One is a career and education's course, which can count for core academic courses, either English Language Arts 11 or, or 12, and Applied Algebra, which can count as an Algebra 1 credit. So we request the board directors grant approval for new course equivalencies with the Career and Technical Education Program effective for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Any questions from board members?
I had one question, just reading through this earlier. I get, uh, Applied Algebra being an equivalency for Algebra 1. I'm not sure my brain gets the connection between a Careers in Education course and English Language Arts, unless there's something in the Careers course that involves some expository writing or, or essay writing or some kind of, I just don't get the connection between that and a Language Arts course. So can you draw the picture for me?
I, I cannot, but I can get that information from Director Soret. Cause I know that is, there's a process that has to go through that shows the, the equivalency process, and so I'll give that information for you.
And that equivalency process is identified by OSPI, correct?
Right. Yeah, I, I knew there was a process, but the details aren't here.
Yeah, it's more a matter of them telling us what qualifies and we submitting to you what qualifies. And so we'll look into that some more.
Okay. Any other questions? There are no other questions, I would entertain a motion that the Yakima Board of Directors grants approval for, of new course equivalencies for the Career and Technical Education Program effective for the 2020, 2021 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Don, seconded by Norm. Is there any discussion? Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Vianuueva.
Aye.
Reverend Davis, Jr.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have approval to purchase seven school buses. Stacy, we haven't purchased school buses in a long time.
No, we haven't, President Rice. So RCW 28A.335.190 requires the board to solicit bids for items or work that exceed $75,000. However, RCW 28A dot 160 dot 195 allows school districts or educational service districts to purchase school buses from vendors who submitted and accepted bid through the State of Washington OSPI Student Transportation Quote System without using a competitive bid process. This purchase will replace buses in our fleet that are past their useful life and having increasing costs for maintenance and major repairs. I'm requesting that the board of directors approves the purchase of four 26-passenger school buses and three 81-passenger school buses from Bryson Sales and Service of Washington, Incorporated in the amount of $1,149,747.
Are there any questions from board members? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion that the board approves the purchase of four 26-passenger school buses and three 81-passenger school buses from Bryson Sales and Service of Washington, Inc. in the amount of $1,149,747.
Second.
Moved by Don, seconded by Graciela. Is there any discussion? Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Aye.
Reverend Davis.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, Barb. We've reached the second opportunity for comments from the public. We've not received any other requests via our online process, correct? Okay, I'm seeing lots of shaking heads, so is there, do we have a need for executive session?
We do not have a need for executive session this evening.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Trevor?
Um, I see that Bunker-Frank has left. I did want to draw attention to the board, uh, that we will be holding a balanced calendar summit, uh, in conjunction with the ESD. That is to look into what a balanced calendar could do. Uh, it is scheduled for May 13th from 8:00 a.m. till noon. Uh, I will send out a link if the board is interested in attending, uh, those sessions. And, uh, I'm sorry that she wasn't here, so I'll have to reach out to Bunker. And then I did want to mention that we have the YSD Financial Audit Exit Conference coming up, and that is on the 30th at 10:00 a.m. And we have three board members interested in attending, so it is, uh...
We'll have to announce that as a meeting.
Director Walker, Rice, and Davis. So is that the decision is to, would you like me to just, okay, I didn't know if we wanted to decide whether to or...
If we have less than three, we don't have to announce it as a meeting? If we have only two of us, but since...
I didn't know if we were going to select just two to attend and you were going to draw straws or fight it out or whatever, but it sounds like we'll just invite, we'll just...
We'll arm wrestle for it. I think I'd lose.
You could bring your dogs. Okay, we'll announce it.
Okay.
Thank you.
If one of us, now and then, um, we'll let you know.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Nothing further.
Anything from board members? Okay. All right. There's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Have safe travels going home.